Please raise your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Join me in a moment of silence. Please be seated. The roll call, council members.
Ms. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Here.
Dr. Thelmer?
Here.
Mr. Ivey?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Tripplett?
Here.
We noted all seven council members are present. Next roll call, elected officials and Safety Service Director.
Mayor O'Leary?
Here.
Augur Baldwin?
Here.
Director Lo Palmer?
Here.
Treasurer Sparks? Safety Service Director Ward?
Here.
Okay, you've all received a copy of the July 13th regular council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Earleston made the motion. Do we have a second?
She said, she made the motion.
You made the motion? I didn't hear you, sorry. You've got a second, okay? Here, Alt made the motion, second by Mrs. Earleston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts likewise. Minutes of the July 13th meeting has been approved as presented. Next is the July 20th special meeting. Have a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Ivey made the motion, second by Mrs. Earleston. Any additions or corrections? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts likewise. The minutes of the July 20th special meeting has been approved as presented. Now we have additions to the agenda. First is, we have four of them tonight. Ordinance 2021-66.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richard?
Yes. On ordinance 2021-66 and the complimentary one, 2021-67, I'd like to not put this on the agenda for tonight mainly because, one, the subject matter is one that should have a complete and thorough discussion. While I know that this came through finance in a sense of a general discussion, we had a general discussion in this council chamber a few meetings ago, but what's inside those ordinances have not really been discussed in a thorough way. Also, the fact that in that ordinance is a stipulation for an emergency enactment, I think that it is a imperative that this council allow the opportunity for the citizens to be able to have a full discussion about it, have plenty of time to digest it. So, I think it's a little premature for it to be on this agenda at this time.
Okay, Dr. Felder?
Yes, Michael, I acknowledge all the points that you made. However, I strongly disagree with that statement. I feel like it has had, while not specific discussion, general discussion throughout the full council and committees, and this idea has been approached for weeks and weeks, if not months. Secondly, even if it is not enacted with the suspension of the rules and passed tonight, to go to a third reading is appropriate because it still talks about the salaries for the positions, not salaries for specific people that are in this room and may or may not be on the next round. If it does not pass as a suspension of rules, then it cannot be enacted for this election cycle, and it will go to the next appropriate election cycle. So, I still think that while it may not affect the upcoming 2022 and 2023 candidates that year, it will, we're talking about 2024. I don't know that you have that power to look that far ahead as to what's going on. So, I'm adamant about having, even if it doesn't pass as an emergency, or, excuse me, as a suspension of rules, it'll go three readings, which is an appropriate amount of time for anybody of the public that wants to discuss the pros and cons. If it goes to three readings, then clearly it will not have an effect with this election cycle. But I believe that it needs to be on the books, and it needs to be discussed by this council.
Excuse me, Mr. Palmer.
May I just notice disrespect, Mr. Richard, but you really should have a motion and second before you start discussing this, on whether it should be put on.
Okay.
So, someone's got to make a motion to put it on the agenda and second that before you should be having this conversation.
Mr. Richard, would you like to make a motion for that effect then?
Not to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
To put it on the agenda, okay. I'll make a motion to not put it on the agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tripplett. Roll call?
Mr. President, should we have a discussion first?
Pardon?
Shouldn't we have a discussion first before we?
That's the appropriate time for a discussion.
Yeah, okay.
To, Dr. Felder, I agree with you that this is something that should have a thorough discussion, that though this council has on numerous occasions, and will probably do that in the future, produce legislation that is an emergency status, this should not be listed as an emergency. While you truly erate, we did have a general discussion, the specifics of this ordinance was not in any of that specific discussion, and that's a fact that it was not passed out of your committee in any way, shape, or form, I think is, essentially, it needs to go back, and if your committee would like to take and so pass it at the next opportunity, then we can then have it on the agenda, and it can have a full discussion. I do not believe that this particular two ordinances, because of what they are, and because of the timeframe that we're looking at, election cycles are based upon us, that to have anything but a very thorough discussion, three readings, full committee participation, lends itself to being interpreted as something being run through.
You know, if it does not, I don't see your point on the emergency clause. The emergency clause states that it takes effect as soon as possible after the vote. It's not a ramrod through. So, if it's after three readings and appropriate discussions, that's all that clause means. If you're referring to the suspension of the rules, that's kind of a ramrod through, and I agree, but I'm not worried about the optics of it. I think if it goes to three readings, it has no bearing on this election cycle in the least, because it will not affect people who are elected in November. It won't affect them for two more years. I think we need to have it now, because we've talked about this in councils past, nothing ever got done. So, if it doesn't pass tonight as a suspension of the rules and go on to the final reading, then anyone who's elected, no one who's elected this November, this won't affect at all. Because if it doesn't pass tonight, it can't be on this election cycle.
So, but you're indicating that you're, somebody's wanting to pass it tonight?
Yes, I would like to see, after a discussion, I'll tell you that I will make that motion, and I fully, if it doesn't pass, I'm not worried about it.
This is the reason why I disagree with you, Dr. Felder, because one of the things that I find that this will taint, even the discussion, for anybody that is running for current, all of us are running, but some of us have folks that are going to be running against us, this would taint that knowledge or that opinion out in the public, because we just, if you were to take it, be successful, for example, and this would pass tonight, then for the folks that are out there voting, they're going to feel like it was ran through, because guess what? This is the first showing of this informal council, the ordinances with the details in it. There was no opportunity for any type of public review, or even to find out about it, because, let's face it, we have many folks in our community that are not only busy with their lives, but they're also elderly, there are various reasons why we have three readings for them. So, I do not, I think, again, that, while I understand your point, my point is that I do not think that it's a good idea, and it flies in the face of the public's perception, and even on that, it flies in the face of the public's ability to know and to be able to respond at something like this at this council meeting. Again, I reiterate the fact that it's not an emergency. That's my point.
Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to not add 2021-66 to the agenda tonight.
And also 21?
2021-66. One at a time, 66. Mr. Ivey?
I am not in favor of advancing 21, 21-67 in regards to the city council salaries per se, but I certainly would not object to have any discussion, and at least have it added to the agenda for 2166, because there are, as Dr. Felder says, it has been discussed, and if it does not go through tonight, and if we vote to have it removed from the agenda, I have absolutely all the confidence in the world that it will be revisited next month in the Finance Committee, and we can make it an official ordinance to come out of the committee, and we'll be discussing it again next month.
Other discussion? If not, roll call.
Not putting on the agenda. Ms. Alt?
No.
Mr. Botkins?
It was not to put it on. Is that what that means?
A yes is not to put it on.
It will not be on.
Yes means no.
No. You want it on either.
No.
Didn't say yes, Ken.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Didn't understand.
I see some questioning on this issue. Can we make sure that the folks that are voting, that they know what they're voting for?
To not put it on the agenda, the agenda's on, a no means you're voting no, I guess, not putting it on.
That's true. That's confused. If you vote yes, you are voting to not have it on the agenda. If you vote no, you're voting to put it on the agenda.
Ms. Alt, would you like to reconsider, if I saw in your face?
Well, we need another motion to add it to the agenda?
I don't think a no automatically puts it on the agenda. We need a motion to?
No, no, that's right. Dr. Felder?
That's a consternation.
So, my answer is to say no.
Ms. Earleston?
No.
Dr. Thelmer?
No.
Mr. Ivey?
No.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Did you give me the roll call, or how many there were?
There was three yeses and four nos. So, it's not taken off the agenda.
But you would need another vote now to put it on the agenda.
Okay, we have another? I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 2021-66 to the agenda.
That's for 66, right?
Correct.
Do we have a second? Mr. Ivey, seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins? Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
No.
Mr. Tripplett?
No.
Again, give me a call.
Okay, it's, we have four yeses and three nos.
Okay, so it did not pass?
No, it didn't.
It actually passed.
It passed, it was added to the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that one's out of the way. Now, next one is ordinance 2021-67, a similar situation. Do we have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 2021-67 to the agenda.
Dr. Felder made the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second. Next is 2021-68. Dr. Felder?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 2021-68 to the agenda.
There's a motion, Dr. Felder, second by Mr. Richards. Roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Roll call, 7-0?
Yes.
7-0, it passed. Added to the agenda, and the last one is Resolution 2021-14. Need to add that to the agenda. Mr. Richard?
Motion to add Resolution 2021-14 to the agenda.
Okay, put the motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Ivey. Roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Okay, to review this, then, we have added the agenda, is ordinance 2021-66, 68, and Resolution 2021-14. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Dr. Felder made the motion, second by Mrs. Earleston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts likewise. The, has been approved as amended. Did anybody wish to speak tonight? I didn't have any forms. You want to fill out a form there too, if you will, Steve?
Yeah.
Go ahead and speak, and then you can fill out the form.
You can give it to me afterwards.
Yeah, you can give it to her afterwards, okay?
I wondered, the press council, back in 2006, we petitioned out there on Route 61 and part of 309 to get street lighting out there, and we need it bad, because the deer out there are terrible. I've had three deer now killed in my front yard, and when you get north of 30, which is now in Crestline, I'm going to address Crestline Council on that too, about getting some lighting on their side, but I just wanted to see if it's possible, we could get some street lighting out there. And Dave, I think it was Dave Oles, it was the city manager back then when we petitioned, and we never heard, nothing ever came of it. And that's been a long time ago, but there's a need for it, and we need to get the speed limit down on there. And I went and I talked to ODOT over at Bucyrus about that, and they told me to go up to Ashland and talk to them about getting it reduced, I'd like to get it down to about 40 mile an hour. People just fly down that road. The police do a good job out there, and Sheriff's Department, and Crestline Police, even the system out there too, I've seen all three out there, and Highway Patrol too, but we need some street lighting out there bad.
You're talking about from the intersection of 309 and 61?
Yes.
Down to the corporation limit?
All the way down to Route 30.
Okay.
Yeah, the new Route 30, all the way along 61, and you got electric out there.
Yeah.
But it's not been hooked up.
No.
But, well, we sure would like to have some lighting out there, and, you know, and along, right across from the Swiss Village, all in that area there too, because the deer are thick out there. In fact, I was coming back from, going into Crestline the other night, and somebody flash their lights at me, and somebody just hit a little fawn up there, and a mother was standing right by the road, and, I don't know, that bothers me, obviously, the animals land like that on the road.
Isn't there already a light there, just a caution light that?
Yeah, at the intersection, but I need street lighting. I need something to light up the street.
Oh, street lighting, I'm sorry, I don't have the streetlights on my mind.
Yeah, yeah, we need, yeah, you got electric poles out there, but it's not been, it's not hooked up, but it would sure help, you know?
Any other questions from the council?
And while I'm here, here, I got a map that shows the boundaries out there, and you guys can have that. What's in green is Crestline, and what's in gold is Galleys, so you're welcome to that, so you can have that. In fact, here's another one that shows all, that shows, wait a minute, put that noise out on that one. I had one here that showed all of Galleys and Crestline.
Well, he's passing those out, Mayor, you have something?
Yeah, that shows everything there, you can have one each.
Going to have the mayor, going to have the mayor say something now, Steve?
Just with regard to the speed limit up there, what we can do, and we will do, is we did, when was the last time we did, it was two years ago, we did change the speed limit on 598, I believe.
Right.
And? Right.
Was it recommended at that time to only put it down to 50? Right.
That's what it is now, but, I don't know when a deer steps out in front of the?
Right. But anyways, that's how the speed limit is set, and anything less than 55 is allowed or qualified, so that's on that issue. The street lighting, I've, heck, I've not heard that Mark maybe has in his longer career with the line department, but, you know, there's a cost attached to that, I think we can determine that pretty fast. I don't know if he, if Mark has a number in his head or not, but it would be.
You probably need about three transformers, and the way the poles are spaced, I forget how many's out there, whatever the new LED lights will cost, long arms, secondary wire, it's probably going to be a couple thousand.
Pardon?
Probably close to five, six thousand.
Total, or per light?
Total.
That seems to me to be something we should look at and talk to Jerry about. I'd not heard that request before.
Wait a minute, five grand for all 61 lighting?
Well, those poles are spaced quite a far apart.
Okay.
So, there's not as many as you get into town.
Right.
So?
Wasn't there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's, I was going to say.
But Steve, I think we got, the request seems like one that we ought to come up with a number and get back with you on the street lighting.
Is that, is this something that we're totally ready to discuss, or do we need to do that?
Well, let's see how much the number is, Ken, and if you have, if it's above 50,000, then we have to bid that out. And I'm sitting here, I'm, my guess is there's money in the budget to do that, but I don't have the foggiest idea, and that's why.
I can't see 50,000.
Okay.
Well, it's, you know, probably going to be above five or six. That's just off the top of my little brain.
Okay. Well, so, we'll put a number to that, I'm not sure, unless somebody has an objection to doing it, the only one would be free electricity, somebody might know about more free street lighting, but.
I think, I, Steve was on council when we shared an election cycle, and I know this issue has come up a couple of times with city managers, but also with you.
Right.
And one of the issues was Ohio Edison owning the poles and the electricity on the Rock, I don't know, I'm?
No, I don't think, I think this, for street lighting won't be a problem, where the residents live is the Edison side, the west side of 61.
Right.
Our poles run out the east side, the horse farm side of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we put the lights, is on, the Galleys poles on the other side.
We share with the telephone out there.
Okay, I thought that was a showstopper back in the day, but?
It is to hook in the residence.
Oh, okay. I see.
I thought, why, why, why can't we hook in the Galleys electric?
Because you're their customer, and they would have to agree to.
It's territory.
We're getting far afield on this, but anyway.
I thought the city of Galleys was in control of all the utilities, and who could hook into it when you're in a corporation limit? Utilities have territories.
So, pre-existing, so when you annexed out there, you were already in Ohio Edison, now First Energy's territory.
It remains that.
You wouldn't want the utility company being able to throw away their customers, you know, we don't want it, because there's some situations where there isn't a muni right next door to pick them up.
How do they work that, sometimes I see, I've seen Galleys share poles with Ohio Edison out there. Yeah, we pay too. Is that how they work that? Yep, if we share theirs, we pay, if they share ours, they pay. I wonder how they did that.
And not nearly enough, I might add. But that's not, it is something that probably a source of revenue we could.
Mayor said we'd check, oh, Ken?
I was just going to comment on what Mark said about, we don't need as many poles or lights out there, because the LED system is so, so great, I mean, it goes out so far, and you can name them, and it'll cover a lot of territories, so I think that'd be a real good idea, though. It is dark out there, but we can afford it, that's the main thing.
Okay, you'll check into that, then, okay.
Matt's first call tomorrow will be one of Steve's neighbors that doesn't, that enjoys it being dark, and doesn't, you know how that feels, please, old neighbor.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2021-50, it's our first reading?
Ordinance 2021-50, entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to submit an application for a transitional work grant to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation and declaring an emergency.
Okay, it's the third reading. Dr. Felder?
I was just going to ask if Ms. Ward could just summarize quickly before we pass this?
Yes, this is a grant, it's paid 100% by BWC, and this is a, and ways to go injured workers back to the workforce.
Okay, Dr. Felder?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-50.
Can you hear the motion, but Dr. Felder, we have a second? Mrs. Earleston seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
It passed 7-0, moving on to ordinance 2021-56, it's also a third reading.
Ordinance 2021-56, entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept a 629 work development grant and declaring an emergency.
Need discussion?
I'm sorry, I just would, somebody want to take and kind of refresh the council's memory on this, but I know it's a 70/30 match.
Yeah, mic by mic, or, Mr. President, there are three parts to it. One is the thing that got this started, it's the 629 money, I think it's 462,000. Then there's a second part, 75,000. We were just talking with the guy from the state today to make sure that that, that they had the right recipient on that 75,000. That comes from the jobs in commerce section of the Department of Transportation, I believe, I don't have that in front of me, but I think those guys worked for ODOT. And then the third portion, estimated at 120,000 or 125,000, would be the local portion. And then the third portion, estimated at 120,000 or 125,000, would be the local portion. All of, all of these, this project won't sell until next year. So where that would come from, I propose money out of the street fund, which largely, not all of it, largely comes from the general funds. All our gas tax, all our license tax, not the extra $20, the state share. And then a portion of the capital improvements fund. So that's how I would propose funding to make up that local share. So that's, I hope that's a sufficient refresher. Seems like it's been, been waiting, you know, in the wings for a while now, but.
Other discussion? Mrs. Earlson?
I know I was not at the last meeting, so this may be something else that would've been addressed and discussed. But I know that it does say that for the free center, and I'm just wanting to clarify that. If that would not come to fruition, we would not be in any violation of the agreement.
I don't believe, I, I don't know. That, that's a question of me. I don't believe so, but I, but I don't wanna misspeak on that.
I, I did have a call with Ohio Development Services Agency on that topic. They were noncommittal in their response. They didn't say 100% there would be no problems, nor did they say there would be a problem. Of the reason that language is in there, and I can tell you that, is it is in the grant language.
That, that is the only concern that I have had. I hate to turn down close to $500,000, infrastructure on it. Yet at the same time, that language just is concerning. Like I said, if that would not go through, then we have accepted this one for that. I wanna make sure that's a safe.
My, my response to that is, I can't imagine council voting to authorize the service director to advertise for the bids if there was nothing gonna happen out there. But if it was simply speculative infrastructure. So I don't see, the, the next step in this would be, this is to authorize to accept the grant. The next step is council authorize designing the street, and then Port Authority has agreed to pay for the design of the water and sewer line. All three of those projects won't, there, there wouldn't be an ordinance that was, that council was asked to pass unless there was some assurance that something was going out.
Well, that's not, my concern is if that something wouldn't go out there, but it is a specific, we have, the language is specific. And that's my concern, if that's specific, is what's going.
I, I think piggybacking on what Tom said, by the time you will get to those other votes that you will have, there will be more clarity on that project, I would imagine.
This is simply to accept the grant. It doesn't, this isn't, so we, designing the project, this would accept the grant. Whether council yet this year or early next year decides to go ahead and bid the project, that, that vote is yet to be taken. And we're at no jeopardy of accepting it in the event that it does, it does move ahead. Now, if we build it and nothing happened, that might be a different issue. And that, you know, this sounds really, really cheesy, but as long as I'm mayor, I really think, you know, I can't imagine the mayor bringing something forward to build that just because the money was there. So I don't see, because if you, if you think back a little bit, the, the water and sewer comes out of our capital improvements fund. I'm suggesting half of the local share comes out of the capital improvements fund. I, I can't imagine council or a mayor just spending that money to spend it out of that capital improvements. And we, it was a, it was a, it took quite a bit to get that fund assembled. And I don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna see it just.
Eunice?
Mayor, clarify if I'm wrong, but maybe to answer Timmy's question, accepting it, if we would receive it, and then if that would not go through, wouldn't it be just like any other grant? We would then send the money back?
Yeah, I think so.
So I think that that's, so it's not like, once we get it, we're committed to have to spend it. If something would happen in some way, we would just return the money, we wouldn't be in violation of anything. So if, if that specific language is not in there, and we receive that money, and that didn't go through, we could still put the infrastructure out there?
Well, I think what happened then, if it was under development, is that, yeah, that, 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 the people in, we would talk to the people in Columbus saying, well, this sports complex didn't happen, but this.
But we got something else.
Small shopping center, something else went there, but I don't.
So are you kind of implying that possibly we could still use the money? And just.
Yeah, I would hope so.
And say, hey, this is what happened, we still play.
Yeah, that, that.
That, that's really what I'm getting at. I don't wanna lose, like I said, close to $500,000. You could amend the application. Okay.
If, if they allow that.
If they allow.
But the bottom line is, Tom, you've done that with other things.
Okay.
In the last several years.
Eunice is right about, on both points, you mean.
I wouldn't wanna have to send it back, because, you know, I mean, I think it's a.
Other discussion? Dr. Felder?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-56.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felder, seconded by Mr. Ivey. Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Okay, passed seven and O. Okay, next ordinance 2021-60, this is the second reading.
Ordinance number 2021-60, entitled ordinance enacting section 301.202 of the City of Gallion Certified Ordinances and enacting section 301.54 of the City of Gallion Certified Ordinances.
You've heard the reading of the ordinance, do we have discussion?
Hi, Mike, could you explain how this got started at the last council meeting? Either one of us, or maybe we can, this started with a simple request from the new police chief about this issue. Somebody in the community had asked whether or not there was a, an ordinance that, that limited golf carts. Turns out that there's not, and all of a sudden, at the same time, there was a spun up, some sort of, of mythology that the mayor was somehow against it, and it's like, you know, it couldn't be further from the truth. So what I think happened at the, at the last council meeting, the committee meeting, was to go ahead and move ahead a notion that allows us to allow golf carts on the city streets. And so that's what the, the, started with the police chief knowing that we weren't enforcing the law. And I think the best solution is to change the local ordinance and, and ask everyone to use caution.
Dr. Felder?
I think this is a ridiculous notion, as I sit on my front porch on Boston and watch grown adults with two kids in the back, unrestrained, moving pretty fast. They might be, they're sure slow-moving versus the motorcycles and everybody else hot, hot rodding around. But this is a ridiculous notion, in, in my opinion. And I know that, according to Mr. Palmer, we don't have to pass it. But if we choose to do it, there's specific wording that Ohio has said. If you're, if you're gonna have this law, here's the wording, correct?
Yeah, what basically the lay of the land is, is that Ohio says, basically, these are not allowed on city streets unless cities authorize them. And then the state of Ohio says, if you're gonna authorize them, we're gonna tell you what your ordinance is gonna say. And that's what you have in front of you. So there's no wiggle room with this. You either buy into this, or you don't buy into this. You can add things to it. You know, you might want, you know, a specific safety restraint. You know, as Dr. Felder said, safety restraints for children in, in the back, or whatever that would be. You can add to Ohio law, but you can't take away from it.
You've gotta have, you buy, you buy a car with, that's tested by the National Highway Safety Institute, and you've gotta have your infant, you know, strapped in. And this is a, you know, airbags and belts and, you know, that, these, these golf carts are, it's ridiculous. It's not gonna have the same level of protection. If, if somebody gets thrown out at 20 miles an hour, there's gonna be a lot of damage. And I don't think, I, I truly have not read what the, the ordinance says, but are there restraints required? Are there child seats required? Are there, I mean, but, but it's still an open cockpit, for crying out loud.
Section C says they must have a safety belt installed at each designated seating position and shall be part of the safety inspection.
It's, it's not enough. My, my '66 Oldsmobile had better restraints.
So you don't think this is a good idea?
Negative. I, I do not. This is not a good idea. I think it should not be allowed.
Everybody else around it's allowed it. U.Syrus, Ontario, Mansfield.
That's the first time I've ever said, you said, we'll go along, because everybody else did.
I'm just telling you.
So you, you're, you're saying.
I'm saying I do not.
On the road at all.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, thank you for my rant. Appreciate it.
The motion, not, concludes the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-60.
This is only a second reading. Are you gonna suspend the rules?
We haven't so far.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, heard Mr. Triplet, the motion to suspend the rules. We have a second? And Ms. Alt, seconded? Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins? Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
No.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's seven and O, six, six and one, okay, passed. Okay, now, discussion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to pass 2121-60.
Okay, you heard the motion pass this ordinance, seconded by Mr. Ivey, seconded by Mr. Triplet. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
No.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Six and one again?
Yes.
Six and one, it passed, okay. Moving on to ordinance 2021-62, it's our first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-62, entitled ordinance authorizing the City of Gallion to participate in a 2021 ODOT winter contract for road assault and declaring an emergency.
Is this an annual thing? Dr. Felder?
Yes, this came through committee, and, yeah, we're a tad late on the application, I think. But nonetheless, it is an annual. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go to the final ordinance, uh, final reading on 2021-62.
Okay, Dr. Felder made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Earlson. Roll call.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Okay, it passed by seven and O vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance? Uh, Mr. Triplet?
Does anybody know any prices yet?
Uh, I don't know, it's 50 bucks a seat, so we're, yeah.
Other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-62.
Motion by Mr. Richards, seconded by Mr. Triplet. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
It passed by seven and O vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021-63, it's the first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-63, entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to accept an American Rescue Plan Act airport grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion. Dr. Felder?
Yes, this came through economic development and airport, and it is part of the American Rescue Plan to, distributed amongst, through the FAA. And we are eligible for some funding. And this is an ordinance to authorize documents to accept that. And Ms. Ward, the, the use of it, it's $22,000.
$22,000, yes.
Is at our discretion?
Yeah, it's a little bit more wider than the last $1,000, but it can be used for operations, personnel, batties, rent charges, so it's a little more.
Okay. And there's no local match?
Okay, Dr. Felder, and Mrs. Earlson? Pardon?
I was gonna make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. By Mrs. Earlson, suspend the rules, seconded by Dr. Felder. Roll call.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Okay, passed, seven and O. Now, discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-63.
Okay, you heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, seconded by Mr. Ivey. Discussion? Now, roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Order's passed, seven and O. Moving on to 20, ordinance 2021-64, it's first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-64, entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2020-92 permanent 2020 appropriations by appropriating funds in the drug law fund and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion? Who wants to take this?
It went through finance, I'm told. Ms. Ward, could you help us with this one? Okay, Mr. Earlson, could you help us with this one? And then Ms. Colleen?
Oh, this was, Chief Rodriguez came up, and it's a police department. This is appropriating $5,000 to 102, which is actually their donation line. So it's kind of just a formality, because they have a little bit more freedom of wiggle room with that fund. But they received a donation from the county prosecutor's office. This money is going to be used to buy keyboard protectors and binoculars for the department. And we would appreciate the suspension of the rules so that we can get this appropriated, so they can give that.
Yeah, discussion? Mr. Ivey?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and move 2021-64 for a final reading.
Heard the motion by Mr. Ivey. Do we have a second? Mr. Richard, seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Any motion to suspend the rules, passed seven and O vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-64.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet. We have a second. Mr. Ivey, seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlson?
Yes.
Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Order's passed by seven and O vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021-65, it's. Orders passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021 day 65. It's first reading.
Order number 2021 dash 65, entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to enter into a cooperative agreement and a loan agreement with Galleon Port Authority relative to the five Galleon projects and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a discussion? Dr. Felmer?
I'm pretty sure this one came through finance, and I know that Mayor O'Leary can give us, and, uh, Mr. Miller is here also to give us, uh, some details on it.
Thanks, Doc. Also here tonight is Harry Gilz, who is, uh, I think, uh, many people have met Grant. This is his brother, and, uh, I happen to know that their father from past work at, at ODOT, so they've had a long history of investing in Galleon. The proposal, simply put, is to have council agree to loan, uh, to the Port Authority a sum of $300,000 that would be an interest-only note with a five-year balloon payment. That will, uh, that investment or that commitment will trigger the construction of buildings three and four, for lack of a better nomenclature. It also, uh, because of their ability to buy materials, uh, what, what we're hoping is that that will, uh, enable them to buy, uh, the materials for the apartments as well as the materials to get two buildings going out on New Winchester. So that's the, that's, that's what this incentive will do, is to move that forward. I'm not going to pretend to understand the financial analysis, but I think this enables them to buy enough lumber to get over some of these price, um, hikes that have happened. And so that the, uh, that's the proposal, simply put. Chad, I'm not sure if Chad or Mr. Gilz have anything to clarify or add to it.
Just a second. Ms. Earleston?
Um, can I just add on that and then correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
But they were able to do more of a bulk purchase, which would bring the cost down. So that was the idea.
Yeah, that's where the, that's where that, where the money that we will, uh, Port will loan to them will enable them to buy in more, more in bulk. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I didn't say that clearly before.
So in the time to maybe clarify a little bit, and Mr. Gilz can speak to this probably with more authority than I have, but, uh, in talking to Grant, um, the way they're going to build this project is going to be different than what they would have done in the past. In the past, they would have, you know, sort of paid for materials as they, as they go, as they were needed. In this instance, they're actually going to be purchasing, uh, all of the materials upfront in bulk, uh, to drive that cost down as far as possible and be able to complete actually two buildings, so it's another 30, 60 units, uh, out there at the car crossing and then start two simple banking houses on, on Winchester. So the need for the money upfront, uh, so that they can break ground, uh, hopefully this year, I think they're targeting late fall to break ground on the apartments. Um, but that's, that's kind of the change, the way they've had to do, I guess, construction is the, the driving, that increases costs is the driving force behind the need for that.
Chad said it correctly. Um, this, basically, it's power of buying in bulk a little bit, even for labor. I think if you're doing one house or one building, it's not nearly a factor in saying if you have a, a larger package or a larger scale of a project to do. And it's just, it's a tight market right now, and I think that's probably right now our best avenue of jump-starting everything forward just by getting the prices down by one committing to a bigger scale of a project and buying it in advance.
Okay. Ms. Alt?
Are all of the units that are currently built occupied?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
And, um, Mr. Mayor, could you kind of, um, address the issue of the, um, where that money is right now and how much we're making on it?
Yeah.
That's what comes to what we're going to be making on this, just to clarify.
Yeah, that is the, the 16, 17 billion, I think, that we have invested. Okay, no, in, in, or overall, our portfolio includes a piece of it that is through the state of Ohio, State Treasure Star Ohio. That's earning less than 1% interest now. So the proposal might be, uh, really sort of an auditor's decision what funds that, uh, that would be liquidated, but I think it's safe to say that if you, um, took that $300,000 out of the Star Ohio, and the interest that the port agrees to pay in the document is greater than or equal to what they're paying, then the, the cities, uh, will be, uh, will break even, if you will. The, and I think that's really what's, you know, embodied in this agreement. So it'll be interest-only until the end, and then the, the borrower, uh, will pay the port back. The port will pay us back.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, members of council, I went into, as a procedural matter, uh, what was before the committee when they passed it out to come to full council, uh, was a different loan agreement, uh, because the interest was not included in there. Uh, through the conversation that took place there, the decision was made for my office and the attorney for, attorneys, plural, for the Port Authority to negotiate that out. That has happened. So what respectfully I would ask is that you, uh, someone, uh, make a motion to amend, uh, this ordinance to take the, uh, Port Authority loan agreement and cooperative agreements that were in the committee packet and instead replace them with the ones you have before you tonight.
Any discussion or a motion here?
Would be the second set, because they have both. So it would be the set, yeah, the second.
Yeah, a motion would happen now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, call me with this. I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance 2021 dash 64.
65.
65, uh, to add the interest amended, amended to the documents. Okay, amended to the ordinance.
Adopting the current, the documents which are with it now, tonight.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Richard, second the motion. Discussion on this amendment? If not, roll call.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
The amendment passed by seven oh vote. Discussion on the ordinance?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Ivy?
I have proposed a couple of questions, uh, at the committee meeting that this came up, and, you know, one of the things that dawned on me over the weekend is that I wasn't around when the port was, uh, fought about and created, and I guess the first question that I have is that, was this an original idea when the port was formed as far as, I understand the basic idea of the port is for economic development, housing, recruiting businesses in town, but to, was it part of the original idea, uh, to be giving private loans out, or loans out to private developers to achieve those goals? Was that a vision of the port leaving the mayor to answer previous council members or, or Mr. Miller?
That's a, yeah, basically, that's one of the, one of the, the powers the Port Authority has that a city doesn't. It's one of the reasons that Ohio's Port Authority law allows this kind of stuff. Why it makes, what's particularly applicable is that it's been, um, decided by the courts, I believe, that housing is economic development. It fits in under that big umbrella. So it's, it's, uh, in terms of the, of the definition, it, it qualifies, and, and then the short answer is, yeah, that's, this is one of the things that a port could do that we can't do.
Uh, my guess, since the answer is yes, I, I guess I brought up the issue of the security of these loans as well last time. Is there anything that's been added to the language?
Nothing has been added to the language of insecurity. It basically is a personal guarantee. Uh, and you have that document in front of you.
I guess my last question is, is that how or who determines, um, who receives these loans going forward, and what are the standards or credentials that are needed to qualify for private developers to get these loans?
Dr. Felmer, you had something?
No.
Oh, I thought you did.
He had questions.
Who?
Aaron's question.
Chad, okay?
I, I would think that the simple answer to that, Aaron, is that, that it's going to lie with the Port Authority, assuming the Port Authority has funds to fulfill those requests. So, um, I think you have a couple of steps back in time. Um, the Port Authority does have a small fund now, a revolving loan fund, uh, that was part of the revised agreement from the repayment of the COVID, uh, loans that we provided to businesses in town. So, you know, it was, um, I guess, before council, before the, we'd be establishing some. So the, the, the easy answer to that is it would be the Port Authority deciding, you know, what types of projects we wanted to, uh, use these funds for. Obviously, these specific funds, though, are, per the agreement, being repaid to the city, so it's not like these are going to be, uh, continuing to be lent out. So that, that existing revolving loan fund that we have would be out of court discretion for economic development purposes. I'd say secondarily, our, you know, I, I think our biggest win here, in addition to helping out with the, uh, car crossing project, is to start to get the old Rensfeld lot developed for single banking houses. Uh, that was, you know, another, um, you know, I guess, gift from council, the Port Authority, where we use some of those funds to actually purchase that property. So I think getting housing, new housing starts in the community, um, you know, I'm very optimistic that those, those will sell very quickly. Uh, I think that that would be a great attract to, uh, the current developer, but additional developers perhaps, you know, develop the rest of those plots out there. There's enough acreage out there for 20-plus housing developments. Uh, so I think that's, that's where we're coming from as the board. That's the biggest win for us, to advance that, that additional project.
Mr. President, the other thing I would add that is, I think it's case by case, and I think, uh, council, how this works is how it will work in the future. A project, a prospect, whatever it may be, this is housing, a key community development need. The next project might be, um, assisting in a, in a new industrial building, okay? The, that customer approaches the port, they try to develop something that helps the project happen in Galleon, and then sequentially, I don't think it, it stands alone. I think council and, and city officials are aware of that project, but that's what would happen in the future. The request would come from the port. Will you consider a $300,000 loan for, you know, some other worthy purpose, or, or maybe more, depending on the structure, the number of jobs. And then, just like, uh, tonight and, and other consideration today, then you would vote on that. So that's the, I think the standard is the judgment of council, and the filtering that you, that you get projects that are worthy is, yeah, we're just going to have to have confidence in the Port Authority and their, and their newly appointed director or newly contracted director will help deal with prospects generally, come up with projects, bring them forward. Thank you.
So Chad?
Okay, Mr. Triplet?
So just to clarify a little bit, um, it's kind of, I'm looking at this no different than me going into for a standard loan request. Um, there's going to be a set of, uh, there's going to be standards that are going to be, need to be met. You guys are going to meet as a board and say, oh, yeah, this is, sounds like a great idea, or, you know, this is probably not going to fly. No different than people going to try to get a loan, some are approved or some are disapproved. Is that, I mean, that's a fair assessment for a layman like myself, not even about the banking.
That's a fair assessment. I, I would say that, um, you know, unlike a traditional lender, we're not going to be in the business of, um, what you would think of, you're providing two-years tax return space stubs, you know, three-month payment, all that kind of stuff. Uh, so where this particular proposal came from was our discussions with the, with the Gilzes around the housing. Um, because they own the option to purchase those first, you know, five lots there to, to build houses on. And so it was really a discussion we brought in by Grant to, I mean, at some point in time, and, uh, I just kind of had a discussion with them as group, as board, what we would need to do to sort of move that forward, and this idea sort of came out of that. So this proposal has been in front of the port board. It has, uh, you know, back this before you, it's been approved by the port board and to go forward. Uh, we are on board with it. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's already come from us to you, um, and basically we're now asking for the vote.
Thank you.
Other discussion, Mr. Triplet?
The star fund that this is coming out of, how much is in it?
I would like to describe it on $3 million.
Okay.
Other discussion? Dr. Felmer?
Is this a, I'm, you know, timeframe, Chad? Is this a, can we go another reading? Is it, you know, ASAP? I, I, I can't remember what the discussion was in committee.
I wouldn't defer to Mr. Gilz on that. So in our world, this is what jumpstarts the project. I think you get a commitment on funding and that's, that's where we're at. We're moving forward as soon as, we're still trying to get in by fall, uh, and that, that's our goal. So as soon as we can, winter's allowing time to start a project.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I think we had a lot of good discussion and, uh, concerns have been raised. Um, I believe that they have been answered, and I think this is, um, a unique, um, not unlike other communities, uh, unique to something that, uh, that Galleon has, i.e. the Port Authority. So, um, with that being said, I'd like to move ordinance 2021 65 onto, uh, the final reading by suspending the rules.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felmer, suspend the rules, seconded by Mrs. Earleston. Roll call.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Okay, passed by seven oh vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance to Mr. Ivy.
I'd like to make a motion to pass 2021 dash 65.
Okay. Mrs. Earleston, seconded the motion by Mr. Ivy. Uh, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, passed seven and oh, so, okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, moving on to ordinance 2021 day 66. It's the first reading.
Order number 2021 dash 66, entitled order, number 2013 dash 53, establishing salaries to fringe benefits for the mayor, officer, and treasurer, treasurer, law director, and president of council for the terms involved, this beginning at the earliest time allowed by law, and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance. Discussion? Dr. Felmer?
Yes, um, the, uh, in a nutshell, we had, uh, some discussion earlier concerning this and, and its fate. Um, I believe that, uh, the positions, um, deserve, um, a more realistic raise than where, where they were set back in 2013, 80 years ago. Um, the, uh, the numbers are before you and certainly, um, up for discussion, and, um, I just think this is a good step in the right direction.
Okay. Other discussion?
I just don't understand how this is going to be sustainable, Dr. Felmer. Uh, that's quite a raise along with, uh, health benefits, with all the other employees, and people know when they run for office, it's a thankless job. So I don't know why you're trying to raise pay.
Well, I, I think, Ms. Alt?
You like to me.
Well, I, I think the, the rationale of Ms. Alt raised was a good one. I think that down the line, and, and I'm trying to think of times when, uh, you know, this council and all of the seats around here are not occupied by the current individuals, um, I would have hopes that, uh, that especially mayor and law director be occupied by, you know, a, a, a young person, and I believe they should be able to sustain a family on a salary. And, and I think that, um, while I, I see the point And I think that while I see the point that a high salary, you know, allows people who think they can do this job, because we make it look so easy, that they figure anybody can do this job. And wow, another 75 grand a year, that would be, you know, pretty comfortable, especially if I'm, you know, already retired and living on a pension. But on the flip side, that's what kind of sold me, was that, and these aren't raises every year for eternity. It's setting them. I doubt we'll look at it, you know, for another eight years again, you know? I think the municipality of Visirus has incremental raises built into theirs. Now, that's not sustainable. You know, if you are raising the salary on an automatic basis every election cycle, I don't think that's sustainable. But yet, they have that in their ordinance. I'm not suggesting that we keep up with our salaried employees or, you know, I'm not trying to make things equal. But I just believe that these positions are above median intelligence requirements, and they deserve an above median salary. I don't know that that was said correctly, but...
So I do have one question, is how did these numbers come to be? Like, how did 55,000 for mayor?
Those were, those were a discussion within the committee. And, you know, Mr. Richard was right. There was not an ordinance to come out of committee with specifics in it. There was an idea and a request by the law director to compile an ordinance.
So with the amounts that we're at, it would be increasing just over 65,000 a year in these salaries? With the mayor being the most, obviously?
Right.
Your request was made for the law director, you got the number, it did not come from me.
No.
Correct.
Other discussion? Mr. Ivy?
In my opinion, this really has never been about paying a salary based upon qualifications that some may have been suggesting over the past month, two months and a half. It's more, and I'm sorry, I had to write my thoughts down before. It's more about paying a full-time living wage that may withstand the pull of candidates beyond retired city or state government workers that already have pensions and benefits for the remainder of their lives. I believe that this, the way the current system is set up now, primarily with the mayor's office, is that it is, it's a very stressful job. It is full of hours beyond hours each day. And to me, I'll say it again, it's worth much more of a position than $30,000 a year, regardless of who is sitting in the office. I mean, the people that seem to be the strongest proponents of this are retired city workers with pensions or retired state workers with pensions. And I, and like I've mentioned in conversations in the past, the way that the current system is set up, we are literally, you know, disqualifying 90% of the working class in this community from ever being able to consider to run for this office at the expense and the sacrifice, you know, to provide for their own families. I don't know many people that are married and have young children that may be very well qualified in some of people's eyes to run for this office, that's willing to, you know, make $15 an hour without benefits. You know, so that's kind of just my opinion on it. It's, I'm not really here to debate. I just, I have a right to an opinion as well. I agree with Mark that we are elected servants in this community. And we do have, you know, we do have targets on our back. It is a thankless job. And I understand this is a polarizing issue. But I, you know, the qualifications in the state of Ohio are very clear about what the qualifications are to run for this office. And it was suggested two council meetings ago that one's opinion that, you know, this should be, this office, these offices should be maintained by retirees. Well, I respectfully disagree. I think that anybody has the right to run for these offices. And the voters of the city will determine who's qualified to sit in these seats. And I just thank you for your time. That's all I have to say about it.
Mrs. Earlston?
I realize that I missed one of our annual community meetings, but I would have liked to have seen more discussion on these numbers. Because there's definitely some that I would definitely, I would not pass this the way it is right now. I think if I had some of these people's own admission, the albums that they actually are putting in, it's not relevant to what's listed. So while I do agree with a lot of the points that have been made tonight on both sides, I have to just say that I wish we could have had a little more discussion on where, where our house is.
Dr. Felder?
Yes. And I believe that carrying it to three readings will give us an opportunity to do that. So, and that's right, was Adam, wanted to move it forward and have a first discussion tonight. Obviously, again, the, in my perfect world, the suspension of the rules sails by and, you know, but I understand the concerns. And I feel like now that we've had a chance to read the ordinance for two weeks, we come back, second reading, discuss it again, chew it over. And instead of having it confined to just a committee of three, we've got the entire table. So I'm absolutely good with that.
Other discussion?
The, I'm quite sure how comments that were made that this is only for retired people. I'm not sure how you understood that a couple of weeks ago there. But one thing that needs to be said is that people don't value experience until they have some. And so some of the reason that things have gone relatively well is because of experience. And so, you know, all of a sudden, because you have experience and you've dedicated 30, 40 years to public service, that's denigrated. And I don't appreciate it. And I think it's, it's, there's a lot to be said for experience. There's also a caution that should be about people who think they can do jobs like this without experience. And so I think you can see that in a lot of places. So that's my philosophical point. The other point that you need to consider over the next a couple of weeks is the, I had a sheet that had benefits option offered to mayor, auditor, and law director. Okay, now you look at 15% roughly. I'm not sure what number you want to use. But what is now conservatively $25,000, taxpayers' cost of family insurance, that going up over four years would be up 60%, a little bit more, which would make the cost of family insurance the neighborhood of $40,000 plus. So all of a sudden, you know, the salary is something you want to focus on. But when you extend those benefits, that's where Mr. Triplet and I would probably agree most completely, is the sustainability of extending those benefits. And it'll be a struggle for whether they're experienced mayor or inexperienced mayor. It'll be a challenge to maintain high-quality insurance for our employees. Kind of held the job velocity here is doing that for employees. Not every year it's been as chummy as it is others. But I think you start extending those benefits, that's where the real cost will be. That's where the consideration of sustainability. There's a little fractional increase in retirement. You know, the taxpayer's share of retirement by doing that. But the big cost isn't really salary. The big cost is going to be benefits for these individuals. And since they're going to be young, I'm assuming they're going to have families. And so if that's the case, then, you know, then you need to use that high-cost case assumption. Just a little levity there.
Other discussion?
When you get older, you'll probably take more offense to that, Aaron, than you meant when you were, when you were solving every older person in the room. But that's okay.
Mr. Palmer?
Just a minute. Since it appears it's not going to be passing tonight, which means it will not come into effect for the next four years in the case of the mayor and the law director. That means that I'm off the hook, because even if I run for reelection, which I'm intending to do, it will never apply to me. Please seek me out as a resource to know what my job is, what kind of hours are involved, what my opinion is in terms of what legal salaries are around. Because my job is the one that has the job requirement and a qualification. And so I compete, if you will, my position competes with how much an attorney can make on the street in terms of a private practice. So please seek me out. I'm happy to tell you, because I'm not, I don't have any skin in the game. I'll tell you the 100% honesty with anyone, but happy to talk anytime.
Other discussion? If none, consider this a second reading of this ordinance?
First reading.
Moving on.
The first reading.
Don't push it.
First reading, first reading, not second, okay? We've discussed it, no need to be second reading, right? Anyhow, okay, first reading. And moving on, we did not add the next one to the agenda, so it'll be ordinance 2021, day 68, first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-68. We file ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for minutes and to enter into a conference below his best bidder therefore as provided by law for the safety netting project at Pico Park to proceed to authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Hear the reading ordinance, discussion?
Oh, I have one thing to say. Fine, this has been really trying to get the right design that works for the kids that use it, that is affordable. It's been a bit of a challenge. We tried to quote it, that was difficult. We do think we had some quotes lead us to believe that we can bid this. And so that's really, it's just that simple. It's probably a late fall, maybe even a spring installation. I don't know how materials are, but it's been needed since Pico 2 was built.
Mr. Ivy?
Yeah, is this, what type of netting did you decide on? Is it going to provide the shade that we had talked about?
No, it doesn't have much shade. It has, gosh, it looks like a big umbrella with metal standards. And then the net kind of drapes out and is connected to the side areas. It doesn't, it's not heavily shaded. We got mixed reviews on the heavily shaded.
Mr. Richard?
I think we probably have some pictures of it, but they're not here.
If I'm correct, I can sum those up to counsel.
Great.
Mr. Richard?
Yes, I think that comes from the mayor indicated. This also is something that has been talked about for, I'm saving the living. So I think that it's good that we're at this point in time. It is a very, very, very safety issue that is out in that park. Anybody that's been out there knows that while heads up may work in some places where you've got multiple bulbs coming your way, it's kind of like being in a war zone. So unless there is anybody that has any other questions, I'm sorry.
This is freeze project, right?
Okay, thanks.
That's all right. I would like to make a motion at this time that we suspend the rules and move ordinance 2021-68 to the final reading.
Motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mrs. Earlston. Suspend the rules, roll call?
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felder.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Wish, suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass 2021-68.
Okay, motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mrs. Earlston. Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felder.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Passed by seven oh vote. Resolution, next one, resolution 2021-14. This is the first reading for this.
令数2021-14 是法律 resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and safety service director and approving a then announced certificate for set expenditure and declaring an emergency.
Discussion on this resolution. Anybody want to take it?
Can someone?
No, no?
I can take it out, you know, it's why you're feeling a little succincte. The way, the funds are already in the company. The way the purchase order was set up, two separate lines. Overall, there are sufficient funds, but there are insufficient ones in the individual ones. So the purchase order total is there, but the lines don't match up. So the wording of this pay, we need to amend now and then close the other purchase order. This doesn't define the payment, this office wants to release the contract. So it was just a, I'll call it a clerical error, because the funds are already there on the purchase order, but the way it's set up, we can't use it to pay.
Other discussion, Mr. Ivy?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on resolution 2021-14 and move to a final vote.
Okay, second by Mr. Richard, by Mr. Ivy's motion, roll call?
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felder.
Yes.
You wish, suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Discussion on the resolution? If none, roll call. Oh, no, not yet. We will amend. Okay, you make the motion first, and you want to make second? Okay. Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Richard. Discussion? Now roll call, okay?
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felder.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Okay, passed by seven oh vote. Other business? Anybody want to discuss their committee meetings coming up?
My request for law ordinance will be August 3rd and 7 o'clock here.
Okay. Mr. Triplet?
Utilities will be the fourth.
Fourth, okay. Mrs. Earlston?
The fire and health will be on August 15th.
Okay, any other, Mr. Ivy?
I'm looking at, I'm getting, yeah. Parks and Rec is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, August 11th.
Okay. Mr. Botkins, you?
August 12th.
August 12th.
Okay, Dr. Felder?
Yes. Economic development on the 17th, correct, Jules?
Yes.
And finance on the 18th. We already talked about, I already talked about it in the committee. I will not be in a, Ms. Earlston and Mr. Ivy will be there.
Okay. Okay, any other business from the council? Okay, if not, moving on to auditor Baldinger?
I have nothing for him, thank you.
Okay, Treasury Spurk's not here. Director Law Palmer?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Leary?
I can't say to say, I've cut three or four items. I want to start with things that are now, in the specific case, in the rearview mirror, in the sense that they've been taken care of. And that's that private sewer that was quite a hot topic a few weeks ago now. Pleased to say that that's been replaced with a public sewer and the people are tied in. And sometimes when heck is raised, you know, there's a lot of attention. And when the issue's resolved, you don't hear as much. So that, in case you were wondering what happened on South Union, it's up and running. I think it's raised an issue that we'll talk about in utilities. It'll end up probably in next year's budget. And that's how to systematically handle some of these common sewers, these private sewers that are well past their useful life and how to be able to... that have, are, are well past their useful life and how to be able to transition those in. They have a pretty good handle on the, the blocks, the neighborhoods that have these, uh, uh, common laterals, and so I think that's something we'll be talking about. Uh, the next issue that we continue to work on, uh, is water, uh, we're looking at, uh, there is a plan that is under contract, is a, that, with, uh, CT consultants, to do a general plan for the water department. That's been raised over the past couple of weeks, is there a plan? There is actually a plan being worked on now to update. Uh, some folks have heard in the area of water, had heard some concerns about, uh, evens in the dam out there. Uh, we're gonna meet tomorrow, talk with this county engineer and his right-hand person. The engineers that we hired said our dam is not in any danger, but the roadway on the north side of County Line Road by the, by the old swimming hole, and where that old, there, there is, uh, some slippage there. We're gonna talk about, you know, who's, whether it's a roadway problem or a dam problem, and I don't expect to, to, uh, run into much trouble in terms of who pays for what and what's in doubt. Pretty, uh, simple remedy for that. Two items, uh, real quickly, in the street area, next week is, uh, is designated as local paving. We think that, um, Iberia will be in, uh, first doing milling, and then all those streets that we probably forget y'all voted on earlier this year, they'll start to tackle those, and it'll start next week. And I think they have until the end of August to get that done, so there's, that will, will be all right, it's a completion date. Five ninety-eight, uh, did sell, I believe they're in the process, ODOT have awarded that contract. Uh, what I expect, uh, is in the next sixty days, maybe, uh, maybe a little bit longer, a, a public meeting to just let people what to, let people know what to expect, when temporary pavement's gonna be added, when lane shifts will happen, we'll have a better idea from working with the contractor, talking with them, which end of the project they'll start first. All those things, it'll be important for all people who go to church out there, to work out there, to get their, what is that, lizard, it's, you know, all of that out there will be affected, but, but, um, but, uh, with good information, I think will be better than some of the other projects. We'll have one lane of traffic in each direction, uh, be somewhat narrow-lane, so that's on the paving front. Local contractor, I don't need to go into much more. Two items, uh, that I guess, I'd say tongue-in-cheek, I thought would never happen, and that is video detection down in High Sea Park. So, you know, now hear this, people who, uh, watch this, if you have a rambunctious teenager, they, you know, they'll, will hear what they're saying, and will be able to tell who they are, the visual acuity is good and sound's good, so, that's really handicapped our ability to, to, uh, address some of this ongoing vandalism, so, vandals beware.
Excuse me, mayor, any, I'm sorry, I've got some wonderful news.
Yeah.
We've got these dog parks going into Kobe, any plans for videos down there?
Not, not yet, Aaron, I, that's a good, a good point, the, the more remote the area, that's what we ran into High Sea Park, how to get without a bunch of wires, the cameras, how we were able to affect that, but, you know, I don't know, that, that, and that was the last item, there is the, the contractor, it's been identified, we've got good estimates, Board of Control's approved them, and so, a one-acre big dog, little dog park at Kobe, uh, and eventually bathrooms, if we get our nature works grant, uh, and then a smaller half-acre at South Park, so, you know, it's, um, I'm anxious to see how frequently they're used, and if we, if we trade one problem with locking out baseball, we'll trade them for another dog owner, so we'll have fun, but that, those are the other.
Um, I just wanted to add with, um, the sewer problem.
Yeah.
I'm really, really pleased to hear, I mean, you had a lot of great things added there, but I'm really pleased to hear that it was resolved and having that, and, at the time, it was really hard to figure out how that was gonna be solved, and I'm really glad that we were able to do that, and that we're systematically gonna look at fixing that, 'cause it is a overall problem that is really hard to tackle, so I'm really glad that that was.
Well, thank you, yeah, I think that is on the s-
That wasn't an easy issue.
On the sewer side, that is probably where most of our recovery dollars will, will go, and, and our, my plan is to, is to match those or pair those with some county commissioner dollars.
And that's what we talked about, right?
Right, so that'll be on the sewer, on the water side, there, there are, uh, significant improvements to be made at the water plant, but I also think, uh, we're gonna find there's more common water laterals than we realized, and we've got a little bit of a different approach to the leak detection that we're gonna try to roll out to see if we aren't missing some of the leaks, and not checking some areas we'll check in the future, so.
I appreciate that.
Sure thing.
That was a tough, tough.
It is a tough thing, and you know, people, yeah, it is a tough thing. You want to try to serve people, and you want to try to be fair with other people's money, and sometimes it's a narrow path you gotta navigate. But anyways, that's-
That's it?
Unless there's some other questions, that's-
Yeah, the questions are there?
We're having a wonderful time up here, so hang in there. It's, you know, it's, again, like I said, maybe, it's, uh, oftentimes harder than, than it looks, and, uh, we're bumping along, we'll get to it.
Any other business? Not at eight thirty-seven, do I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Triplet made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Earleston, all favor say aye, most likely, meeting hereby adjourned at eight thirty-seven.
Okay, then have it out. Your next career is as auctioneer, right?